Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand and nineteen at six thirty P. M. Enroll call please.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry Paney is absent in excuse. Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Nocco Callum from the First United Methodist Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for your presence with us here tonight. We thank you for all the blessings you've given to us and to this city. And I thank you for these men and women who are willing to serve our community, who are willing to lead. We ask that you anoint each and every one of them fresh as your servants and speak to them, Lord, and give them your wisdom and your guidance. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. We will go to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners, Mayor and City Manager, Anita Protas, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. In walking down through the docks a couple of days ago, I went by the Papas Restaurant. And we had an individual who grew up here in Tarpon, Stavros Kursasamidis. And he's a sculptor. When Papas's were building the new restaurant, they commissioned him to do the sponge diver that you see as you go up the ramp. Well, all these years, it's been there, and they were hoping that it would sell with the restaurant. And I don't know when that restaurant's ever going to sell, but that would be a beautiful sculpture to put as you go into the sponge docks on the rock. And if anybody was speeding and hit that, their car would fall apart, not the sculpture. He grew up in Tarpon. He was Kettle Powell's brother-in-law. His parents were the Gattis family here in Tarpon, and he moved to South Carolina because that's where his wife's family was from, and they helped him with the children. Although Landy and the other child did go to school here in Tarpon. I'd like to ask the city manager and the mayor if the city manager could contact the owners and see if they would sell the sculpture. At one time, previous owners wouldn't sell it. It's sitting there. Weeds are growing around it. It is beautiful. And Mr. Kursasamidis was a renowned sculpture artist in the south. It would be wonderful if we were able to get it or raise the funds to buy it and move it as you go in. So I think that would be a very great honor to put that sponge diver as you start to come in where the island is that separates a street or something. So I don't know if y'all would be interested in trying to get it. I know people that have talked to the previous owners. I don't know about the people who own it now, but it's a sad thing that it's not being utilized or being seen. And this is another person of great art that Tarpon Springs has produced. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah.
And if we have to raise some money, I think we can. It's beautiful. So I don't know if you're interested, but he looks like a Greek sponge diver there hiding in the bushes. So thank you.
I asked once before.
Yeah.
Without even the rest of the seller.
Pardon?
We can ask him again. I asked before.
The same owners now?
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Well, we can always ask.
You can always ask, because someone can buy that building and demolish it and may not even care about the piece of sculpture.
Yeah.
But it's beautiful.
Yeah.
And I can just see it on the docks. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good evening. My name is David Lamaca. I am the Executive Director of Neighborly Care Network in Pinellas County. Most people don't know Neighborly Care Network, maybe never got hurt it. You might have seen the buses driving around with Neighborly Care. We do a lot of transportation, but we also do Meals on Wheels for the whole county, and people know that. Recently, you probably all received a letter from me, just as we do annually, is as we start preparing our budget for the next year, as you all do the same. We look at what our municipality is, what the contribution of the services that Meals on Wheels and Neighborly provide to community. This past year, Neighborly served two hundred and twenty-nine Tarpon city residents in our various sites, whether it's our transportation services, our adult daycare services, our Meals on Wheel services, and our home chore services. The value of the service was three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, the value of those services that year for the two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And the actual units that means is twenty-seven thousand, which to make the math really easy, it's fifteen dollars a unit is what we do and provide. For meals, for transportation, that's bringing, I mean, basically an on-call system for calling to come in. Neighborly also benefits from six hundred and fifty volunteers who work with us to deliver meals. I know the mayor's helped us out on numerous occasions delivering meals, and if you haven't done it, it's a really, really cool event to do. I mean, to go to seniors' homes and sometimes when they say, "I'm the only person I saw since you're volunteer yesterday," and it's kind of disheartening when that happens. There's about a thousand people on a waiting list right now for a hot meal, a daily meal that we, as a community, not your community, but as Pinellas County, struggles to serve. With our federal funding is limited, so we rely very much on municipality support. So my purpose of coming today is just to reinforce the letter we sent recently. I gave you a little rat card. Instead of a brochure, it's even more cost-effective, just being a rat card of the services we provide. We're always in desperate need. I don't know if folks might have seen this on TV. In the last week, we're on every station because snowbird season, we lose about thirty percent of our volunteers or over two hundred of them we lost, you know, back in when Memorial Day hits. So unfortunately, the people that are snowbirds are the volunteers. The people that stay behind, the people who are isolated, don't have the ability to go back north, still require meals, and we're still delivering. So we're always looking for meals. We're always looking for volunteers to help us with meals. But again, as a municipality, as we talk to our cities, we have great support from a number of our cities throughout the county, and so we're just making them aware, and as I'm doing today, is just aware of what the resource we bring to Tarpon Springs, to your area here. We're looking to relocate. We've recently moved back up. We're all the way up north, the Klosterman Road, which on the south side of the road, so it's not Tarpon, I understand, but we're trying to do that. That's our next step, is to come back here. We've been here before. We're looking to be here again. Because Neighborly, the name Neighborly means we need to be a part of the neighborhoods. We need to be a part of the communities. If we could have people coming and volunteering when it's right in their backyards, we'll be far more successful, and we'll do that again. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions, but I appreciate the time today. And again, I hope that as you guys work on your budget process, you know, maybe there's a possibility of supporting Neighborly in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. It's a great program, and I'm glad that I'll be able to be helpful.
We appreciate your volunteers, and anybody can volunteer. We love having y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Roboski, one six zero two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs. By now, you're aware of the growing opposition to the annexation of the North Lake Estates property. It's a large, growing group in opposition to the annexation. They've also got problems with their wetlands. Just know that that's already being looked into. I happen to know that the same guys that are working on preserving the Sarenova Preserve have contacted the Army Corps of Engineers. And they're jurisdictional wetlands, so they're not going to be able to build what they want anyway. And that Sarenova Preserve, the Ridge Road extension's been held up for fifteen years by these two gentlemen. So there's that. The group is also looking into creating their own municipality, because they do not want their life changed, their way of life disturbed. Keystone is doing it as well, for the same reason. They've already had Florida League of Cities come out and give them information on how to make that happen. So they're going to be doing the same thing. So it would be kind of rude to try to annex that land when those people have a certain way of life that they want to preserve, and they want to govern themselves. They're not asking for you to govern them. So take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Here, Don? Thank you. We are now going to the item number one, which is the proclamation. Parks and Recreation Month, Commissioner Donovan.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation. Whereas July is celebrated nationally as Park and Recreation Month, and whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Tarpon Springs, and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Connor Donovan, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim July twenty nineteen as Park and Recreation Month. And this will be accepted by Craig Dolan, our Recreation Superintendent.
So Dolan, you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you all very much for the proclamation. We've had a great year so far. We just had our Fourth of July event in the park, which had over a thousand attendees. It rained the last half hour, but we had our second annual hot dog eating contest. They only ate ten the winner, not like seventy-two like Joey Chestnut did, but that's okay. In ten minutes, our summer camp is going fantastic. We're full this year, so we have ninety kids, ages kindergarten through eighth grade, running around the center every day. And besides that, we keep on updating. Our parks have been wonderful. We've updated Dorset Park recently this year, so overall, recreation's doing very well for us. So thank you all very much for your continued support. And finally, we just celebrated twenty years of our beach concerts, a free beach concert. So if it wasn't for your support in the community, we wouldn't have those. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none, thank you. We now go into the presentation. This is item number two, the Public Services Department Project Highlight Sewer Line Replacement, completed by our utility staff.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and I'd like these gentlemen to stand with me, at least in the beginning here. I want to introduce Ray Page, he's Utility Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
And Rodney Rainey, he's our Water Conveyance Supervisor. You know, normally, I'm up here asking you to approve projects, or budgets, or reorganizations even. I've been known for a few of those, but tonight, I wanted to highlight some of the accomplishments of our staff and some of our capabilities, and really recognize what they do. So I just appreciate, I'm just going to take a few minutes on this, but I want to give you a quick background on Raymond. He started, I've been with the city nearly twenty years, and we hired him within six months of me starting, and he took over the wastewater plant as the chief operator and really brought that thing along to becoming an award-winning facility. While we designed the R.O. plant, he took his operational experience and really helped us design that plant. And in the process, on weekends, he earned his water license, so then he was able to, he felt very strongly that as part of a leadership over there, he wanted the credentials to go with it. So on his own initiative, he went and did that. So over time, he's really been a tremendous contributor to the utilities. He's in charge of the R.O. facility, the wastewater facility, reclaim water, basically all things utilities. And I really enjoyed working with him all these years. Rodney here to my immediate right. Before joining the city, he was in the Marine Corps for four years and went on to do additional work with the C.B.s for a total of eight years, serving our country. And then he came to work in utilities, and he's been doing that for eighteen years. He started out in Clearwater as a meter reader. He spent some time learning his way in Dunedin, and we're lucky to bring him on board when we had a supervisor position available. He was looking for a leadership role. And just last year, we reorganized the division to put all of the pipes, basically, the water pipes and the sewer pipes into one division and combine those supervisory duties to save on some budget costs. And Rodney has assumed that role quite well. So tonight's presentation, thank you both very much. Tonight's presentation is highlighting one of the projects that Rodney's group has done, and this is the Water Conveyance Division. And as I mentioned, they work on the water sewer and reclaim water infrastructure, and it includes the emergency response, the twenty-four seven things that they respond to quite quickly. There's fourteen dedicated technical employees, and they're cross-trained and either licensed or certified, depending on their area of expertise. Their skills are broad, but yet specialized as well with heavy equipment operation, pipe fitting, using a variety of tools of the trade. They're getting into the G.I.S. with the help of our I.T. department. We're starting to have a tremendous capability in the field with the notepad things to locate the pipes, in addition to being able to know where things are just through experience. Those two things together are a powerful tool. And also, it can't be underestimated, the point of contact with the customers. The customer wants to be able to come up to somebody and ask what's going on, and these guys are experienced and very courteous and enjoy what they do, and I think that shows. So what does it take to work in these types of positions? Well, I've shown you in the highlight here, the sewage collection technician and the water distribution technician, two different types of certifications. The sewage collection worked their way from a C. license to a B. to an A. is the highest level. And each one of those levels, you have to have a certain number of years of experience, and you have to pass a test. So it's quite a process to get to those upper levels. Similarly, with the water distribution, that one goes from a three to a two to a one level, and these are required by law, these water distribution licenses. So it's very important for us to maintain them. The project itself, this project we're highlighting tonight is located in the southwestern part of the city, near Castlework Lane, which is just south of Mir's Boulevard and just west of Carlton Road. During the past three years, there have been three repairs on this section of the roadway, and it was determined the sewer line was failing and causing those things. So our staff looked at it and said, "You know, this is one we can do in-house." So they started to put together a plan to do that. The benefits of the project, they're replacing the failing sewer line, they're improving the overall service to each of the customers, they're preventing noncompliance with the sanitary sewer overflows, and reducing costs when we have to respond to those emergency failures. And those pictures to the right are some of the types of materials that are used in these projects. So staff determined what the needs were. They looked for ways to use modern materials that'll last longer, procuring all of those needed parts, notifying the neighbors, and they installed three hundred and forty feet of line with all-new connections for each home, and they're able to do this project in less than two weeks. Here's some pictures of the sequence. You see the far left, working left to right. That's the job before the excavation, getting the asphalt ready to be excavated. Then they're installing the main line in the middle photo, making those connections, the photo to the right, backfilling that trench, and finally, just a picture showing some of the things they do, like installing a tape, so if there ever is excavation, they know that there's a pipeline underneath there, just another measure to prevent unexpected damage from excavation. So that's a quick overview of the project. We appreciate the opportunity to show you what staff can do, and we appreciate your support that makes all this possible.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I would thank you for sharing with us this great accomplishment. And I want to congratulate on the job well done, and I want to thank you for all the work that you're doing. And also, Rodney, I want to thank you for your service in the Marine Corps. And I spoke with Mr. LeCura, so I'm very glad that he's creating a program to acknowledge and to find a way to say thank you to the employees for their hard work and dedication. Thank you. Any commission?
Thanks, Paul, as always, and thanks, Ray and Rodney, for your hard work and everything you've accomplished. I'm so glad you were here, because that was one of the things I wanted to bring up, is these people that are increasing certification and licenses, that I would love to be able to recognize them on a regular basis, if you can, you know, let us know, so that we can know who is accomplishing these certifications and licenses, and that we can formally recognize them at the Board of Commissioner meetings. I remember that southwestern part of the city project, it was amazing how fast you all got it done, because, you know, it affected a lot of residents, so thank you for doing it so quickly. I see the two hundred, oh, that's another subject, sorry. But anyway, thank you, and yeah, I'd like to recognize everyone who gets certifications and moves up in levels and gets new licenses, because I think that's so important to have happening, and I know that that happens continuously in your department, so thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Paul, thank you for the update on this project. I know when you did reorganization and some additional staff members were added last year with the budget, it was part of the discussion that we'd be able to do some more in-house projects. So it's good to see that the city's able to save some money. I know it costs a lot to do this through a third party, and it's great to see that we have the staff leadership to do that in-house. So thank you all for everything you're doing. There's not many things that the city residents have a contact with the city with every day. I mean, I suppose the roadways and the water are the biggest two. When they don't have water, I know your offices are being lit up pretty quickly, and when you flush your toilet, you want to make sure that goes away without any thinking about it as well. So I know the residents are really happy about this, and I'm excited to see the documentation and G.I.S. continuing to improve, to finding out how old the ages of the pipes are on the sewer and the portable water side continuing as well. So thank you for your service for the city.
Commissioner Donovan.
Yeah, Public Services does great work. I'm excited to see a project being done in-house, and I'm even more pleased that we're able to get it done in less than two weeks, so great job. You guys are doing fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Any public comments on this item? Here none? We are now going to the consent agenda. Number three, the minute has been pulled. Number four is to authorize justice assistance grant, grant application. Number five is the Board of Commissioners meeting how their schedule changes for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Would you like to pull any of those items? Here none? Any commission comment? Any public comments on this item? None? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Enroll call please.
This is only four and five. Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Yes. We are now going to the special consent agenda, which is item number six. Increase the file number one seven zero one zero nine C.C.M. H.VAC, H.VAC products, installation services, and related products and services utilizing partners contract, which is number fifteen J.L.P. zero two three.
And I'll have Tom function to this. Again, this is one that's brought to you because of the amount of money. It's also one of the ones you see when there's projects that this money's needed to facilitate, so I'll let Tom briefly tell you about this increase and why this increase is needed.
Sure. We were using the contract with Train for handling all our air conditioning units throughout the city, multiple different types of units. We actually looked at a couple of units. We actually had earmarked for next year's replacement, but working with Ron Harring and Mark on budgeting, we found that we'd be able to get these units in a little bit quicker, a little sooner. So we need to increase the actual contract enough to cover these units. One of the units is the Community Center, which is also our shelter for the hurricanes, an office upstairs, the mayor's office and the city manager's office, and also the Cultural Center. While we're still in repairs, we're looking to replace that air conditioning unit, hopefully by the time they're ready to finish the exterior repairs.
Thank you. Any commission comment? Commissioner Carr.
I would like the city to kind of look at a different approach than some of the discussions that we've had in the past. Instead of increasing this file, I think there's an opportunity to reach out to some of the local air conditioning companies. There's a lot of local ones here in Tarpon Springs. I am familiar with Train as well. We worked with them at my work. Not super excited with the quality of work that we've seen overall, but I think this is an opportunity to really see, although Train can maintain everything overall, but if we're doing new installs, I think it really, we're really shortchanging the local businesses that are paying their business taxes in Tarpon, and I would make a recommendation that we go out to bid for these three, for some local companies, and have our procurement department reach out to our local companies to bid on these. I'm not sure how long that would take, if it'd be a month or so, and we still have some time in the budget left if they come back greater than these, and we know Train would be the right option to go, but I think that would be the best approach right now, is to try to work with some local companies.
And again, when you see us bring these to you, that's one of the things we would consider. And Tom, if you'd tell them some reason, we did analyze that for this case, like we'll do for everyone since you asked us to do that, and there's a very good reason why we decided this method instead of the other method we did.
Yeah, most of these units, especially one in the, in the Community Center, they're specialized units. They're not the simple, yeah, air conditioner you put in a residential home, and what's your large buildings.
Yeah.
Same thing with the Chiller over at the Public Safety Building. It takes a special type of technicians to handle some of this stuff. It's not as, as, as simple as putting it out to bid and just putting a regular central air conditioning unit in over here. Yeah, air conditioning, of course, over at the Community Center is over twenty years old now, twenty-one, twenty-two years old. It's been, it's been an issue for the last couple of years. We did plan on doing it next year, but the continual issues we had over here, we thought that it's best to get this thing moving now. I don't know if that's going to be as easy as just putting it out to a bid and waiting thirty days to get a cost on it. There's a lot, there's a lot of interior work that has to be done on this too, that's what we're actually doing in-house, so be a little more involved than just putting air conditioning units in.
Mr. Jackus, you want to come tell us about the history when you researched when we've done that and put these out, as Commissioner Carr said, when we've done the last ones?
Yes, when I arrived in two thousand, whatever it was, we put out a maintenance contract, and we did have one local bid on it, all seasons, they were awarded the contract. At the end of that five-year term, we went out for bid again. Only one local business, all seasons, bid on it, and they did not win the bid. Bloom out of South Pinellas County, we had lots of troubles with them. And then when Development Services Air Conditioning Unit went out, we went out for bid, and they were without air for probably thirty days. But Train won that bid, and since they, it was a pretty good chunk of money between number one and number two. No locals bid on it. And as a result of that, and the fact that each time they go out, we're without air, that's when we decided to jump on the U.S. Communities contract.
So we have air right now in these buildings, all right?
Yeah, he asked if there's air right now. These are ones where we don't have air.
Yeah, there is, and I do have an air conditioning tech that works internally in my building management department, but in order to replace air conditioning, this takes a lot more than just.
I've got a question too for Mr. Jackus about, when you talk about local businesses bidding on the, on the projects, those are just businesses that are in the, was it One Star, that get alerts? Like, the procurement department doesn't actually actively reach out to local businesses, do you?
Once.
Once?
Once we did, and it blew up on us. We went out for real estate agent services. We contacted building department, got the listing of all the realtors. And of course, you missed some. So the night of the award, the missed folks were in the audience, and we were instructed to, you know, continue our normal process and not deviate from that.
Okay. So I still can't support this tonight as a commissioner. I would still recommend that it be best practices for the procurement department. Real estate, I understand, is, can be a little bit pretentious with how many real estate agents are in the city of Tarpon Springs, but I think in this aspect, I do understand a Community Center, that's a rather large one, with the coolers, so there is some specialty requirements there. But the other two, I think it would be wise to at least reach out to some local companies to bid it out in that aspect, and really reaching out to them, I think, is an important part of it. I get that it may have blown up once in the past, but that it shouldn't. I get that it may have blown up once in the past, but that it shouldn't stop us from reaching out today for different services, especially in the service level.
Well, again, how we do it now is put it out to try to get the people on that list because it's free to get on the list, and we're about time to do another blitz because we want businesses from all aspects to go and to fill out the paperwork and to get on that list.
The, I'll put an example, the community center over here, that unit over there, there's going to be crane work, it's going to be masonry work, it's going to be electrical work. The spec on every one of these projects is completely different, so you'll have to write, you'll have to write a spec for each one of those. It's not just thirty-day putting out. It's going to take probably thirty to sixty days, write the spec, get it out on the street, give it so many days. It'd probably be a few months, I'm sure, on, in the long run, to put it in. It's not apples for apples. It's a little more involved.
And of course, the other aspect is, was there forty, fifty thousand left, or if something breaks down, that we can get the immediate work of? It's not, this doesn't do all the projects. If something breaks down, then, then we have the ability to immediately get it fixed. Those are just some of the projects which caused the increase, but, but there's also the other part and stuff. But again, you know, it's your decision, but again, it'd be something, again, that almost everyone would have to inspect and put out the bid to do. If that's what the board tells us to do.
I'm happy to support the community center because I know it's a specialized project, but the other two I'm not willing to support tonight.
Well, I think this is something that we, we should keep in mind and, you know, do it in, in the future that we've always got to give the opportunity to the local businesses to, to bid and support them any way we can. Of course, there's going to be some cases that we cannot do that, depending on what situation is. What I'm here right now with these particular projects, it doesn't seem like it's logical to, to stop it. And, but the next projects that we have, we need to look at and see what opportunities we have and to give the local businesses the, the first chance to bid on. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, there is a list of people who are on your, on your list who apply to be considered. Is that right? You have a list of, of businesses that you use that have been put on that list, so local businesses could apply, right? Okay. I feel like there shouldn't be any delays in any work that we need to do. It can't be without air conditioning for thirty days. So, I, I support this, and looking at our backup, this hundred and twenty-five thousand or three hundred and twenty-five thousand with a two hundred thousand increase has been issued against approved budgets. So, that's already been approved in the budget. Is that correct?
Well, it would have been next year's budget, 2019, 2020.
So, I, I agree that we should go ahead and prove this because I, I don't like to see delays, and if you want to be on the list, get on the list. That's how I feel.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify something. So, is it just the community center one that is specialized, or is it also the other two?
Air conditioners are completely different depending on what type of unit you have, whether it's a chiller unit, a package unit, there's ductless units. There's many different ones. It's not, not every unit is exactly the same depending on what they're servicing, how much service it requires, the amount of air that you exchange, you know, community center exchanges tons and tons of air on the hour because of the size of it. So, every unit's going to be specialized. So, as I said, you may have somebody that can fix a ductless air conditioning unit in a home over here, but when it gets in the commercial aspect, which almost all air conditioners are, it gets a little more specialized. And then, if they go down, unfortunately, most of these people are working areas or community center over here. You know, you can't wait thirty, forty days to replace the air conditioner. What we're trying to do is replace them before they do go down. We know that they're, they're working on the last legs.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't, I mean, they may work another four, five, six months. I wouldn't guarantee it, but if it goes down in July and it's ninety-eight degrees outside, my phone will be ringing an awful lot.
But right now, just to, just to clarify, all three of them are working fine? They're just old and they need to be replaced?
Are they working fine? Yeah, we've done some work on it internally too. I do use some of my personnel inside to do some minor repairs and stuff like that. Okay. Free on changes or if you happen to have a leak, but just because the age of the units and the amount of usage, especially in the community center, I would, if I get six months, I'd be happy. I may get six days. I may get six hours.
Okay. So, our arrangement right now with Tampa Bay Train is that not only are they putting these in, but they're kind of like on-call with their specialists, ready to perform the maintenance?
And they don't, even this unit here, the one over here, is going to buy, it's a specialty type of unit, so when I, this gets approved and I have to order it, it's going to probably take about six to eight weeks to get the unit here. Meantime, you have to get a crane set up. You have to remove the other one, so everything's got to be timed perfectly too. So, we're going to, I think around seventeenth of August, we're looking to do it, so we can shut the unit, the building down for three days with that gymnasium, so we can remove the other units, come back and get operational, but minimal effect on summer programs and also on the, on the fall.
Okay, and is keeping Train for the maintenance and bidding out whatever we can bid out not an option? Are those like mutually exclusive? Like, will Train not do the maintenance if somebody else were to install it?
Train doesn't do all the maintenance. We do some maintenance in-house. We do all the air conditioning, all the filter changes. We look at them, we inspect them, we move them around. They do a, they do a biannual. They come in, they see things that we may not be able to see, put all their equipment on where they can read it. They're, they're a specialized company. I mean, not specialized, they're, that's what they do. They do air conditioning. They do a very good job of it.
Okay, because that's just what I was trying to wrap my head around was, I saw in early 2018, our annual amount with Train was seventy-five thousand dollars, correct?
That's true, yeah.
And now, it's all the way up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Is that just because we're doing more projects with them and we've been doing more maintenance with them?
Again, in this case here, we're pushing up projects. We had earmarked for the fall. We feel we can do now, the money's available here now. It could be, next year could be fifty thousand dollars. Air conditioning, again, is, it's hard to read air conditioning because of the different uses. I may go two or three years playing fifty thousand a year, and then a couple of years down the road, put in three hundred thousand. It's, it's hard to predict. We do our best to score, to schedule it, but it's very hard to predict.
And then, where's the, the thirty-eight thousand going to go? I'll flip to the appropriate page, but I think it's on page two on the last line. It says the remaining thirty-eight thousand will be used for repairs and maintenance throughout the city. So, is that just saying, hey, if we need any repairs on these air conditioning units, we'll spend the thirty-eight thousand that's already here? Or do we have our own city employees?
We may not spend it. It's very much a possibility, but God forbid you have an office that maybe someplace that also the unit goes down, you didn't expect, a carpenter put a nail through a wire. So, I, I still have that emergency service I may require along the way. We may not spend it at all.
Okay. But, but Tampa Bay Train is always available, drop of a hat to come out and fix something. Again, like, let's say if the air conditioning were to go out tomorrow in the community center, Tampa Bay Train's there?
Oh, there. Their response time is excellent. They have technicians that live in the area, some are just within a few miles of here. Many days they happen the same day.
Okay, but do we know if they would continue to do that maintenance work on-call if we were to bid it out to more local companies?
Do I know? No, but being as an ex-businessman over here, I was in business for twenty-plus years, I would probably have a little bit. I'd, I'd look at and say, well, what's used to be Russian air, I'm not be able to get a job anyhow, so it could affect your, your actions, yes. But I can't speak for them, so.
Okay, is that something we can, we can ask them? Because I know right now, everything has air conditioning. It's not like somebody's sitting in an office without air conditioning. Do we have time to ask them if that's, if, if that's something they would continue their contract with us? Because, yeah, I mean, we would be bidding out to more local companies, but are they really going to walk away from potentially over a hundred thousand dollars in repairs a year because of that?
I'm not sure how to bring forward and ask that to them.
There, there is another aspect of this over here. We have a building manager control system. We manage all the air conditioning in city hall, in the Public Safety Building, in the library, from my office. And they also have to work with the control company. That's a whole different company that handles, you know, controlling the airflow and everything else. So, it's kind of specialized. Again, is you have to understand the computer system and how that works. They do have technicians on-site that understand both sides of it, so they can come out and look at something and say, listen, it's a, it's a flapper valve bad. We've got to replace that, and/or they know it's a control unit and know how to diagnose that and then get a hold of the, the motivated company that will handle that. So, there are some, a lot of specialties involved in these systems.
And again, sorry to run you through the gambit of questions here, but how many repair employees do we have on staff right now? And I know installing it is completely separate, but the repair employees we do have on staff, what else do they do other than the air conditioner?
I actually have one employee that dedicates, now, all the time, but the air conditioning unit, that's Colby. He goes out there and he can do some minor repairs. Maybe there's a freon leak. He can charge a freon system, maybe change a bell. He looks at these. He does all the filters, and when he looks at the systems, he looks to make sure that those operations, nothing leaking. Is there something funny in there? Maybe a bird built a nest in something, or they need to be cleaning. So, yeah, it's not one particular person, but we do, are dedicated to, we're doing a lot of that work.
Okay, and how long have we had this contract with Tampa Bay Train?
Five years. About five years.
About five years. And have we ever, have we ever bid them out or tried to go to a local company?
We've had it before. We had two other companies. We had a local one for a short time, and then we had a company down. I think they were in Clearwater someplace over there, which was an absolute disaster.
Okay.
Not return phone calls, constantly, tech's not showing up, inexperienced techs, so.
Okay, and this is my last one. I just, I want to, what's the difference between just putting out a simple press release and saying, hey, we're looking for local air conditioning companies to come in and give us a quote on, you know, X, Y, Z? Like, I know, I know you said that process might take a long time.
The city, as well as most every county and municipality in the area, use a service called DemandSR. People sign up to be automatically notified by their commodity code. Anybody who's in the air conditioning business signs up as air conditioning, and they're automatically notified of our bids. Hillsboro, and also, we also have notification on the city TV station. We also post notifications at the library. On occasion, we'll do a vendor outreach at community center. More often than not, the folks that show up are from Palm Harbor, but not, not local residents.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Motion, die. I need another motion.
I make a motion to deny the application and ask for a bid or RFP being completed for these projects while reaching out to local businesses to incorporate into the bid.
Have another motion. Do we have a second?
Can, can you repeat, repeat that motion, Commissioner Carr?
It would be deny the increase currently that's being proposed or asked by staff, and then it would be a recommendation to go out to an RFP for these three items, including local businesses. And they would probably need to be rebid individually as well, because, for instance, Train could do potentially the community center, but then one of the local businesses probably couldn't do the community center, but they could maybe do the mayor and city manager's office or the cultural center.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
No.
Mayor LaHuesis?
Yes. Thank you. We are now going to the item number seven, which is the ordinance 2019 dash fourteen, application nineteen fifty-three. That amendment, hotel height, this is a second reading. Senior Attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
This is ordinance 2019 dash fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending section 111.00 of Article Seven of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, by adding the ability to appeal and approval of a certificate approval, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance 2019 dash fourteen by title only. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on May thirty-first and June twenty-eighth, 2019.
Staff report.
Since first read, there has not been any additional comment received by the department, and there has been no additional information. So, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have somebody here with us, with you that you want to introduce?
I can if you'd like me to. So, this is John Bertrand. He is our new city planner. He started with us last week, and hopefully, you'll be seeing him around City Hall. He won't be presenting more than likely here to BOC, but he'll be presenting at some of the other boards, so you'd like to see him.
Good evening. In terms of the height? I'm the new city planner. I come from Washington State and then Virginia, and I'm excited to be aboard and get a chance to work with all of you.
And welcome to Tarpon. Thank you. Heather, we have an issue with the title.
An issue with the title?
Yeah.
Yeah, so is there, this title is referencing a, an amendment to section one eleven of Article Seven, and what, what the ordinance is actually doing is amending section twenty-five point twelve of Appendix A. Is, was the, was the appropriate title just changed out? I mean, what was advertised?
Let me see.
You see where I'm coming from?
So, this is the hotel height under twenty-five, twelve. This is the section, this is the notice of, I don't have my ordinance here. Hold on.
Okay, so, while you're looking there.
Yeah, the, it looks like the ordinance title, that's, the title that's actually on your ordinance is not what was actually advertised. This is the advertisement?
Yeah, I just pulled up the advertisement as well. So, Mayor, let me go ahead and read. I was reading the ordinance as presented here. I want to read the actual title that was advertised, and this, this corrects the issue that we just caught.
Yeah, and we'll just have to put that correction, give that corrected. The, for some reason, that didn't get carried over into the ordinance that's in your packet, but it was advertised correctly.
So, I need to, we need a motion to withdraw that prior ordinance, twenty-nine fourteen, and I need to read the title again. So, whoever made the motion in the second?
We didn't have a motion?
We didn't get that far.
Okay, so, I'm going to read ordinance 2019 dash fourteen, the correct title. An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending section twenty-five twelve D two D of Article Two of Appendix A of the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, by adding a maximum height dimension for hotels, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That is the correct title. That would match the, the body of the ordinance itself. The title that I read on this ordinance is inaccurate, so.
Back to you.
Okay, there has not been any additional changes other than the fact that we will be making the title change on the ordinance before the final copy is executed. But with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any commission comments, question? Are there any public comments on this item? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Boski, one six zero two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine. This came in front of the Board of Adjustment. I'm not here speaking as a member of the Board or for the Board. I simply wanted to make it plain that even though the members of the Board were unanimous in their belief that we need a hotel and this project, we were forced to vote against the project because the rationale for the height was viability of the project. And we're not allowed to consider that on the Board of Adjustment. Now, the county allows that consideration. But the city of Tarpon Springs does not. So, our, our hands were tied. Eventually, there may be something that comes in front of our Board that we have to shut down that you can't fix like this. So, it seems to me that giving more flexibility to the Board of Adjustment would make sense. I mean, why would you shut down a project? Because, you know, you're not allowed to consider if it's viable or not, and the one thing that they need to fix it is the one thing we can't do. This has happened many times before. You know, you're just lucky it had a flexible Board instead of a flexible code. And I'm sure Mr. Elliott will enlighten you on some of those other instances, but anyway, it's something to consider. We need more flexibility on that Board, not to give more variances, but for important projects that need to be put through. Viability makes sense. You want us to be able to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Herb Elliott, eleven eleven Riverside Drive. As Chris just mentioned briefly about the history of this problem, you might not know why three of us from the Board are here, and it's really impossible to explain this issue in four minutes. Although I've talked, we've talked to each of you in some detail over the last several years about this problem. We've asked for the City Commission to amend the Board of Adjustment. We've asked for the city commission to amend the Board of Adjustment ordinance. And let me just read what we're talking about that Chris alluded to. One provision of the code says, "In determining whether to grant a variance, the board shall not consider any evidence that is based upon conditions, including financial or health conditions, which are personal to the applicant." In this case, in the staff report, the only reason for this variance, which was recommended by the staff, was for financial viability of this hotel. And that was the only reason. And clearly, it's in contradiction to the ordinance that you have passed, that we have been asking for you to consider. And that's why I'm here tonight, to urge you to bring this back up on the agenda for discussion. It's been a problem over the past several years. I can go through a number of examples. We've all been through that. A couple come to mind. The Pinellas County Park Department was required by our zoning code to build a substantial amount of foliage around a private pool at Howard Park. Solely to save money, they asked for a variance. The staff recommended approval. We gave it to them. The fish didn't care about the foliage around this pond. It was a private part of Howard Park. The housing authority needed a variance that night to get, I think it was a five million dollar grant. And we put our heads in the sand and we said, okay, we'll grant the variance. And the housing authority has remodeled all these projects around Tarpon Springs. I think each of you would have urged us to do the same thing on those particular instances. One more case. An applicant was required by your code to have a, a garage separate from their house. It had to be at least two feet away from the house. They wanted to build an attached garage for obvious reasons. The code says, no, you can't do it. Staff said, no, you can't give this variance. We did anyway. Because it made no sense. No, none of the neighbors objected. These are the kinds of things that come up every few months. It bothers me to violate the ordinance that you have given to us. I don't like to see the ordinances ignored. I think it's hypocritical. It's not good for the city to see our ordinances waived by our city government, as we have been asked to do, for example, with this hotel variance. So in this particular instance, the vote was three to two to deny the variance. But we urge you to consider an amendment to the code to give the board the flexibility to grant these variances. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? I want to express my, uh, appreciation to the board for working so hard and serving the seat of Tarpon Springs. But this comment is actually not related with this item on the agenda. Right now is, um, reading number two, second reading, and that has nothing to do with what it was, uh, the comments were all about. So just want to make sure people understand that. But I can, I, I understand exactly what it, you know, what Mr. Elliott and Chris was talking about because I also serve on the board. And I, I sympathize with the difficulties they have to face. Heather, you have anything else?
No additional information, no.
Okay.
Again, we don't have any other comments because we agree that that's not part of what we're here. We, we did this before. If we have to do it again, that's fine, but we already went through this once before. Um, this item is completely different and had no relevance to this item, so we don't have any comment on it.
Are there any other public comments on this item? You're none? I need a, I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Excuse me, yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number eight, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, the application nineteen fifty-six, vacation of right of way. Uh, this is a second reading. This is quasi-traditional. The city attorney will read the title and will explain the quasi, quasi-traditional process.
This is the second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning a portion of a ten-foot wide utility easement along the north property line of Lot Eleven of the Hidden Ridge Townhomes, plat book one-twenty-nine, page seventy-one, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for proposed and future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County and providing an effective date. This ordinance was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on, uh, June twenty-eighth of this year. The quasi-judicial procedures are as follows. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence of this hearing, uh, that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial and relevant evidence of the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, uh, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Anyone that's gonna speak on this particular matter is gonna raise your hand and be sworn under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Um, have there been any changes, uh, since the, uh, first reading of this particular ordinance? Or additional testimony or evidence the city would like to present?
Uh, no, there have not. Uh, the applicant is present here. Um, if he do have questions, he can be sworn. But I don't think he needs to make any additional comments unless you have questions.
Back to me?
Yes.
Any commission comment, question? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
I want to make sure it's open to the public. It is a public hearing, so I, you asked if the applicant had anything to say. Did you open it up to the public to ask?
No, you usually do that.
Okay, so is, is there, sorry. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to address this issue? All right, thank you. I want to make sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. That concludes the agenda tonight.
Thank you.
And we go to the staff comments. Chief?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Tom, City Attorney?
Uh, no further comments. Thank you.
To the court?
No, not that.
City clerk?
Just one quick one. Um, I just want to advise, uh, the city residents, uh, that the city is actively seeking, uh, applications still for our Sustainability Advisory Committee. And they, if they're interested, they can get applications on our website or contact the city clerk's office at nine four two five six one four.
Thank you. Permission Carr?
Uh, it was great to see all the residents celebrating Fourth of July, uh, at the park and out of the beach and throughout the neighborhoods with all the different fireworks going off. Um, it's a wonderful time to celebrate our nation's, uh, freedom and celebrate with friends and family. Although we had a little bit of rain, it was still a great day and a beautiful day, so. I just want to wish, uh, safe travels to everyone traveling, uh, this summer and all the school, all the kids are out of school. I hope you enjoy the summer as well, and I have no further comments.
Yes, um, I was happy to be present at the ribbon cutting for the new chamber, uh, location and to present the McKee to the, to the city. Uh, I was, a lot, there were a lot of people, there were a lot of business owners there and, and I was happy to be there. Uh, my second comment is, Anita, you must be reading my mind. Because I had a conversation about that statue with Chris Still, um, last Friday because he was on the same page. And, uh, we talked about us getting, you know, the city to maybe look into the Lowe's selling that, that statue to us so we could use it as an entryway or include it in the entryway. So that might be something we could, you know, ask you to, to look into to see what do they plan to do with that statue? And would they be willing to sell it to the city or give it to the city would be even better? Um, so just wanted to bring that up too.
I will, uh, ask the owner. I'll be having lunch with him next week.
Okay.
I will. Thank you.
No comments from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, I also like to, uh, congratulate and to thank our city employees. And also the sponsor for the Fourth of July picnic. It was terrific. People had a lot of fun. I think we have more games for the kids to share than we have at it. And, uh, it was nice to hear that we had over a thousand people. I want to thank everybody for doing a terrific job with that. Um, that concludes the regulation session and it's adjourned at, uh, seven twenty-nine P M.
Congratulations.